Welcome. I now call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023. This meeting of the City Council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio recording of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the city of Somerville website, and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call, Counselor Mbah. Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Here.
With all counselors present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that the City Council salutes the flag of the United States of America, and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We will begin this meeting with a moment of silence, and I'll ask if any counselors wish to say a few words about members of our community that we have lost. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask the Council to remember Florence McWaters, who passed away on December 29th at the age of 88. Mrs. McWaters was the mother of Bob McWaters, who we know as my predecessor as the Ward Three Alderman, and who worked for many years for the city before that.
Recording in progress.
The Housing Authority. Florence McWaters was born and raised in Somerville and was a lifelong resident, and I'd like to just briefly read a remembrance that her family released. Florence held several occupations over her lifetime, first as a New England Bell Company in Boston, at the New England Bell Company in Boston, the Somerville Public Schools and the luncheon programs, and then at Somerville Hospital as a switchboard operator and patient information desk. During her retirement days, she proudly helped others in recovery programs. Above all, Florence was devoted to her family and had a deep love for her heavenly Father, and she spread the good news any way that she could. So I'd ask that we keep the McWaters family in our thoughts tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Strezzo.
And on that, it is a huge loss that Florence is gone because she cared so much about Somerville. She was very, very loved by her family, and I'll miss her too. She cared about this city, and it's very much Somerville's loss. So may her memory be a blessing.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. I'd like to sign on to this, and I'd also just like to say that I didn't know Florence, but I know Bob, and he's a gentleman always through and through, and he's always reaching out in times of strife for other people, and so I want to remember him this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Strezzo and Davis would like to sign on to that, and the whole Council would like to sign on to that. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. On that note, I would like to sign on as well, and it's interesting Counselor Klingon said that because I would like to have a moment of silence for his father, James Blanchard of South Boston, who passed away recently. And he was a laborer by trade, proud boxer, trained kids in boxing growing up, and did a lot of things in his community, was cancer survivor. And the thing that makes me think, when Jesse just made his comments, I could say the same exact thing about him, as someone who cares very much about his community, same thing with Bob McWaters, who cared about his community and cared about his parents. And I know I've seen Jesse over the past few years, taking care of his father, looking out for him, and I remember talking to him about it recently, and he just kind of said, "You do what you have to do." And that's a speak to his character and the son that his father had, because that's not what everybody does, and not everybody would go out of their way to take care of their own family like that. So I'm sorry for your loss, Jesse, and for your family's loss, and I know that your father will be proud of you. Oh, and I did, I actually, sorry, one more. I did want to mention, today is the National Day of Mourning for former President Jimmy Carter, and at the risk of being political, he was the president, but I have a lot of thoughts about this, seeing kind of history repeating itself and the patterns that happen. So at the risk of being political and a moment of silence, just want to point out a few things, parallels I see with former President Carter, was elected basically after Richard Nixon and his political scandal. A political scandal brought him into office in order to be the change candidate and bring stability and reform back to government. He served one term and was primaried by his own political party, who was afraid that he would not win the election coming up, and he ended up not winning that election. He was undermined by two major things, inflation and a hostage situation in the Middle East. And the person who replaced him ended up becoming a real paradigm-shifting president, and I think we still kind of live under a Reagan presidency in a lot of ways. And it was a big career, history-shifting moment for a president who really went out of his way to look out for people and look out for humanity. And what I think is interesting about him is not so much what he did while he was in office, but when he left office, despite the fact that the country kind of turned on his belief system, he never changed his belief system. He kept fighting for what he believed in. Two causes that were true to his heart even after that was Habitat for Humanity, making sure that every person had a home to live, as well as peace and justice for the cause of Palestine, which are two issues that still come up to this day. So I just want to acknowledge him and think about him and his family and his role in this country, and he might not make a lot of lists for the greatest president of all time, but he would definitely be high up there as a great human being. So my thoughts are with his family.
Thank you. I know the whole Council would like to sign on to those as well. Counselor Wilson, Counselor Mbah, and then Counselor Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I want to request a moment of silence for the unhoused woman killed in the fire near Broadway and Alleyway.
Thank you. Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Roger Matias Perez Jimenez, Somerville firefighter who passed away late in December at age 60. He was a beloved husband, father, brother, uncle, nephew, cousin, brother-in-law, and a cherished friend of many. Served as a firefighter in Somerville for 23 years with Engine Company Number Three and retired in early 2023 due to a health battle. He enjoyed his job and took immense pride in serving the community, and he developed some really amazing relationships with his fellow firefighters, who would refer to them as family. Also known as Patricio, he was known for his love of photography, bike riding, dancing, watching movies, playing dominoes, and spending time with his friends and family. He brought joy to everyone who knew him, and he will be deeply missed.
Counselor Klingon would like to sign on to that one. Any others? And Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on as well. Will everyone in the chamber who is able to rise, please do so for a moment of silence. All right. We have a few items to be taken out of order this evening. The first is 7.1, which is appropriations related to 90 Washington, and then 4.22,
Counselor Davis.
which we have a sponsored speaker for, and then 8.4, we have a presentation by our legislative
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, that item is approved.
and policy analyst this evening. And that's it for any items out of order, and then we'll go back to our regular order. Great. Thank you. Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I will then move to approve items 72 and 73, as the administration
But Madam Clerk, will you read the next item on minutes, please?
The next item will be item 1.3, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of The next item will be item 1.3, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 26th, 2024. November 26th, 2024.
is looking to also have those taken up for immediate consideration tonight.
Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. I, great. So next item. So next item.
And then we'll take up item 7.1, a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation And then we'll take up item 7.1, a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation
They might need to be read into the record, though, I believe, first.
of $4 million from the overlay surplus as declared by the Board of Assessors to the of $4 million from the overlay surplus as declared by the Board of Assessors to the
What was that?
They might need to be read into the record, though.
Yes. Before we do that, would you like any items for reconsideration this evening?
judgments and settlements account to pay additional costs of purchasing the parcel judgments and settlements account to pay additional costs of purchasing the parcel of land known as 90 Washington Street. of land known as 90 Washington Street.
For that, yes, I'd like to move for reconsideration of approval of item 7.1 in hopes that it
Counselor Wilson. Counselor Wilson. Do you, is the... Do you, is the...
fails. Madam President, I believe the administration would like to take this up for immediate consideration Madam President, I believe the administration would like to take this up for immediate consideration Thank you.
Okay. So if you want to keep your vote the same, vote no on that item.
tonight. tonight.
Any questions? Is there anyone from the administration here to speak on this? Is there anyone from the administration here to speak on this? All right, Madam Clerk, let's take roll on that.
On reconsideration of item 24-0046, Counselor Mbah.
We do have a director being available if there are questions, and happy to have him We do have a director being available if there are questions, and happy to have him
No.
Counselor Wilson.
No.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
present if necessary. present if necessary.
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Ewan Campen.
No.
I move for approval of this item. I move for approval of this item.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Burnley.
We discussed it at our last meeting in great depth. We discussed it at our last meeting in great depth.
Nay.
Counselor Said.
Okay.
No.
Counselor Strezzo.
No.
Seeing no opposition, let's take roll call. Seeing no opposition, let's take roll call.
Counselor Klingon.
No.
On this item, Counselor Mbah. On this item, Counselor Mbah. Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld. Counselor Wilson. Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
With all counselors in favor, those items are approved. Counselor Ewan Campen. Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes. Yes.
And Counselor Wilson.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Scott.
Madam President, I will once again move for reconsideration in hopes that it fails.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Yes.
For both those items.
Counselor Burnley. Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Hi.
For both the items, 72 and 73.
Counselor Said. Counselor Said.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Counselor Strezzo. Counselor Strezzo.
So if you'd like to keep your vote, vote no, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Klingon.
Sorry.
Okay. Almost there. All right. On reconsideration of items 25-0052 and 25-0054, Counselor Mbah.
No.
Counselor Wilson.
No.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
No.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, those items are approved.
And Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I will once again move for reconsideration in hopes that it fails.
For both those items.
For both the items, 72 and 73.
All right. So if you'd like to keep your vote, vote no, Madam Clerk. Sorry.
Okay. Almost there. All right. On reconsideration of items 25-0052 and 25-0054, Counselor Mbah.
No.
Counselor Wilson.
No.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
No.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Burnley.
Nay.
Counselor Said.
No.
Counselor Strezzo.
No.
Counselor Klingon.
No.
Counselor Davis.
No.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
No.
With no counselors in favor, reconsideration fails, and that item stands approved.
Great. Colleagues, for 72 and 73, if there are, which we can read in a moment, if there are detailed questions, I'd say we need to leave them on the table and come back to them, because the staff member who can speak to them isn't available until later, but let's... Oh, really? Oh. They're on Zoom. Great. So let's read those two items, Madam Clerk.
Item 7.2 is a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of $929,513 from the Salary and Wage Stabilization Fund to the Fire Other Lump Sum Payments Account to fund the retrospective portion of a collective bargaining settlement with the Local 76 Firefighters Union. Item 7.3 is a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of $472,854 from the Salary Contingency Account to various fire department personal services accounts to fund a collective bargaining settlement with the Local 76 Firefighters Union.
Colleagues, any questions on these two items?
Madam President, I'll move to approve the two items, 72 and 73.
All right. Let's take roll on those.
On both of those items, Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Hi.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Panetta Neufeld.
Yes.
With all counselors in favor, those items are approved.
And Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I will once again move for reconsideration in hopes that it fails.
For both those items.
For both the items, 72 and 73.
All right. So if you'd like to keep your vote, vote no, Madam Clerk. Sorry.
Okay. Almost there. All right. On reconsideration of items 25-0052 and 25-0054, Counselor Mbah.
No.
Counselor Wilson.
No.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
No.
Counselor Scott.
No.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you to the President. We're incredibly lucky here in Somerville to have some incredible resources at our disposal, including a health network of hospitals and physicians and primary care workers and nurses who just do incredible work for our community and our constituents. However, as everyone in this council knows, the folks who take care of us when we're at our lowest have been struggling for many years at this point due to COVID and frankly due to the administrative takeover of patient care. We've seen that when it comes to Cambridge Health Alliance, we've seen that when it comes to nurses, and the same is happening at Mass General Brigham across the board, but in particular with primary care physicians. This is an institution that is housed in Somerville, its headquarters is in Somerville, one of its primary care offices is in Somerville, and it is the largest employer in our states with billions of dollars of revenue, and it is driving its workers into the ground because it refuses to pay them well, to give them adequate support, and in doing so harms the health of our constituents in those in the greater Boston area. I wanted to say it's take a bit of time to sponsor one of our residents, Maddie Rowell, to speak about her experience as an MGB physician and the necessity for this institution to bargain in good faith as the workers try to get form a union. So with that, I'd like to sponsor Maddie.
Welcome, Maddie. You can share your name one more time for us.
Yeah. My legal name is Mahduri, M as in Mary, A D H U R I, last name Rowell. Good evening, counselors. Thank you, Dr. Burnley, for sponsoring me. I'm a resident of East Somerville. I live in Ward One, and I am a primary care doctor at Mass General Brigham, and I've been a resident of Somerville since 2021. Primary care is crucial to a well-functioning healthcare system. Primary care doctors prevent and catch early illnesses while treating and managing chronic diseases and acute conditions as well. Good primary care has been repeatedly shown to improve health outcomes, increase healthcare access, reduce deaths, and reduce healthcare expenditure. As a primary care doctor, my job is to provide the most safe and equitable and honest care that I can for my patients, but my job, especially in the last years, has become essentially In addition to full-time clinical visits, I have to do hours of asynchronous work, including patient care, teaching, result management, phone calls, coordinating care, paperwork, documentation, meetings, and the list goes on. There was a study in 2022 that found that in order to do all of the recommended items to care for a full patient panel of about 2,000 people, it would require 26 or 27 hours in a day. I'm often spending time working outside of my scheduled hours, staying late to complete notes, on the phone during dinnertime, conveying critical results, working through what would be personal or family time just to keep myself afloat at work. And in addition to all this, we're being pressured to see more and more and more patients in an effort to generate revenue for the hospital while also being met with constraints from the leadership about what I can and can't do for my patients citing financial reasons or company corporate policy. My situation isn't unique. The state of primary care has also caused a mass exodus of PCP, largely because of burnout, and it's forced a lot of my colleagues to reduce their hours, rendering them part-time employees without benefits, even when they are spending well over 40 hours a week doing their job. We are also one of the lowest-paid medical specialties, and particularly in proportion to the workload. This has discouraged future physicians from pursuing careers in primary care, especially given the exorbitant costs of medical school and inadequately paid years of residency training. All of this has been furthering what is already a catastrophic shortage of primary care doctors. The workload, the dwindling providers, the pandemic backlog, and the lack of autonomy has made really good patient care almost impossible to do. And we feel that we have come to a point of crisis, which has been largely fueled by the corporatization of medicine. And for this reason, a majority of the primary care physicians throughout Mass General Brigham have filed with the NLRB in an effort to maintain the integrity of our profession and to improve our working conditions. Unfortunately, Mass General Brigham has not been engaging with us in good faith. They have refused to voluntarily recognize our union. They have hired one of the country's most expensive law firms, Littler Mendelson, notorious for being anti-union, despite citing the inability to invest more in primary care. They also attempted to exclude a majority of the clinics in Mass General Brigham from the bargaining unit, which resulted in a pre-election hearing, and this has now delayed our ability to hold an election for several months, as the case has to go before the NLRB, and so we have no election date in sight. MGB leadership also had been engaging in discussions with us about our compensation and benefits, but these were immediately halted after we filed with the NLRB. Overall, the safety of our physicians is imperative to maintain the safety of our people, and we hope that the City Council of Somerville will support us and urge Mass General Brigham, whose headquarters lie here in the city, to treat primary care physicians fairly, recognize our union, stop their retaliation and intentional delays, and bargain with us in good faith. Thank you all for your time.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to co-sponsor this, and through you, I want to thank Counselor Burnley for bringing this, and I want to thank you all so much for being here. I'm incredibly inspired by, obviously not just the work you do as a doctor, but the bravery that you and your colleagues are showing for this organizing, taking the time on top of the workload that you have to organize for just basic fairness on the job. So obviously, you'll have our support tonight, but please don't hesitate to reach out to us, all of us on the City Council, anyway that we can be helpful going forward.
Thank you. Counselor Wilson would like to sign on as well, and the whole council would like to sign on. Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you. And, Madam President, through you, to our speakers, thank you for being here tonight, and just wanted to highlight a Boston Globe article with a little bit of data that 2022 was a down year. This was an article, by the way, written in 2024 August. 2022 was a down year for hospital CEO pay, except for Mass General Brigham, and the CEO earned nearly a 12% pay hike with bonuses. Tax documents show the CEO who leads Mass General Brigham received more than $6 million in total compensation of 2022, an 11.6% jump from her pay in 2021, according to a new-released Madam President, through you, to our speakers, we see how hard you work, we know how devoted, devoted you are to your, to our community, to our jobs, and I'd like to see some of that inequity of high pay trickle down to everyone, and it's just not fair we stand with you and let us know how we can help.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, I want to thank the folks for coming up. I had rallied with you all on Labor Day this past year, and I had hoped that you had made, there was going to be further progress than I'm hearing now. You know, my landlady was a nurse at Mass General Brigham, and it was right after the pandemic, and they basically foregone giving anybody raises, they gave them like a cookie and a T-shirt, and they spent millions on branding and like changing, every time they changed the name, they spent millions of dollars to make those name changes, and they rather put money into branding than to the care of patients, and that's just disgusting. And, you know, they live, they call this city their home, and, you know, they don't pay all that much in taxes, and, you know, I just think that they could be doing a lot better by you all, and I support you and I stand with you. Thank you.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through you, I just want to make a few quick just notes, just for everyone's clarity. This union, and I'm going to use union because it will be a union, presented its cards to the bosses almost two months ago, with the vast majority of primary care physicians represented, I think it was something like 75%, it could be, or something, yes, around there. This should have been done already. MGB already has a union for its medical residents and fellows, the MGB House Staff Union, but when this union is recognized finally, it will be the largest primary care physician union in the state, and for no other reason than the fact that they are here, that some of these folks are our residents, I think it's just really important that we send a strong message as a city that we stand with workers, we stand with our healthcare providers, particularly against the corporatization of healthcare, which is, if we've learned nothing over the last several years, is a critically foundational interest for all of our lives. So yeah, with that, I would like for this to be accepted and sent out into the world.
Counselor Mbah wanted to speak on as well.
No, thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I just want to thank you for your leadership, Counselor Burnley, and the courage that you took to speak. I remember in 2021, I also spoke with the physicians at CHA, you know, and it's just always a constant struggle, but you need that moral courage to continue your pressing. So thank you for speaking, and we are fully behind you. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Yeah, we're just getting smacked in the face here by the reality of a really bleak landscape of late-stage capitalism and a failing healthcare system. I guess, you know, to the point that others have made, you know, there's power in a union, and all working people deserve one. Thanks.
All right. This item is approved. Next item.
The next item being taken out of order is item 8.4, an officer's communication from the City Council Legislative and Policy Analyst conveying the City Clerk's Office Manual on Legislative Drafting.
This is going to be good. I love it. Welcome, Brendan.
Good evening, counselors.
Give me one moment to get this set up, to share my screen, and I'm going to apologize for not looking you all in the eyes. Public speaking is not my passion, generally speaking. Getting shocked by things at random is, though. So, good evening, councilors. For the record, again, I am Brendan Salisbury, your Legislative and Policy Analyst. Hopefully, you all know me by now. I am here this evening to present to you the work of a little over a year and a half now in collaboration with the City Clerk and also members of staff. This is something that has been developed, something that I've wanted to work on actually since I started here in 2022. Some of you may recall a point at which I sent a template around for an ordinance and said, "Please use this from now on." This is building from that. I think that the, generally speaking, I think that we have seen people adopt that template, and so this is an attempt to go further and continue on with that. I do really want to highlight that this is not just my work, that this is, even to the extent that there was not active collaboration from staff on this, this was very much informed from the process of developing ordinances over the last three years now, and the pitfalls that I've seen, the things that we do very well here, as well as the things that we could do better, things that I have had conversations with staff about, about ways that could be communicated, amendments and things like that to the council. So that is where this is coming from. So, to the big question here, which is, why is it not advancing? To the next slide, there we go. The big question here is, what is a drafting manual and why do we need one? The question that I will answer first is, why do we need one? I'm sure that all of you have, like me, read the entirety of the Code of Ordinances multiple times. I'm sure you dream about them at night, and also have noted that there is a lot of inconsistency with the style throughout the Code of Ordinances. As a matter of fact, not just from section to section, sometimes even within sections, you will find things with varying list formats, punctuation that is kind of fly-by-night, use of the Oxford comma, not use of the Oxford comma, things like that. Generally speaking, this leads to confusion. And so this is what has led me to create this drafting manual, which sets a standard for formatting process and quality, does promote transparency and accessibility, because, and I know that this is up on the slide, and I usually hate to read off the slides, but I think it bears repeating, that a uniform style is predictable, what is predictable is more easily understood, and that good formatting is a critical component of good drafting, and good drafting is a critical component of good law. So what is in the drafting manual? First, general principles and organization. This is both informative and aspirational. There are some things in here that are descriptions of how the Code of Ordinances are organized, as well as a little bit of a peek for now at some future changes that are going to be made. Next, types of legislative action. Some of this will be review for all of you. You are all now well-familiar with these sorts of things that you can do as a council, but this is not simply aimed at you as a council, and so the information is presented here and described in detail to make sure that everybody is aware and able to keep up. Special rules. This is the nitty-gritty, the technical aspect of the drafting manual. This is where we get into things like grammar, formatting, punctuation, things that I enjoy and most of you will fall asleep while I'm talking about it. Let's see. I don't know if the TVs are updating, but next on the list is drafting standards and process. Each of you has likely had a conversation with me about this at some point. You have likely heard me describe my five standards for good legislation, as well as the process that we have worked through, and so that will be a little bit of a review. Diving right in, general principles and organization. So the general principles are basic things that underpin the entire style guide, the first being, use plain language. Some of you may know by now my utter disdain for the use of Latin. That is in here. There's simply no need to continue using Latin. It's also very important that we do not have a situation where people who are reading the ordinances are having to go and look things up elsewhere. Generally speaking, and this is not necessarily something that has been borne out, for instance, at the State House, the target of law should be the general public. It should not be attorneys, it should not be judges. It should be very clear to the people who are burdened, restricted by the law to understand what those burdens, restrictions, and responsibilities are. Second is to clearly define terms. This, of course, builds off the first one, which is that if we are to use jargon, because we cannot avoid it, it must be clear what it is that we are saying. People should be able to look at a term that is unfamiliar to them and know that it is defined clearly and that they will be able to understand it. Use short sentences. I'm sure, I had an example, I neglected to put it in here, of a particular part of Mass General Law, which is, I believe, 400 words in one sentence in a single-block paragraph, and it is utterly indecipherable. I don't believe we have anything like that in our Code of Ordinances. We should continue that way. Use the present tense. This one is fairly simple. Things should be read in a way that makes it clear that they apply today. It should apply today, it should apply tomorrow, and it should apply 100 years from now, and it should be able to be read that way at the time that it is being read. There should not be a casting into the future when, you know, this shall apply to you at some future date based on the reading. Err on the side of specificity. This one, again, is very straightforward. I like to think. It is generally better to be as clear about our intent as possible. Economy of words as well is, of course, a high priority, given the short sentences. Avoid the passive voice. I hope all of you took a class at some point where an English teacher yelled at you repeatedly about the use of the passive voice and took that to heart. It is a thing that obfuscates the subject. And in law, where it should be very clear to the reader whether they are the subject who is burdened, responsible, then it should be clear. And finally, be direct. Generally speaking, we don't need to be polite. We don't need to use flowery language, we don't need to dance around things. This is law. Law is a demand, and as a demand, it should be clear and direct. For the organization portion of this, currently, the Code of Ordinances are arranged by chapter, article, division, and section. There are 15 chapters. Generally speaking, as we create new ordinances, those are slotted into one of those 15 chapters. Those categories, though, are rapidly becoming unwieldy, and so in the future, there will be, of course, a review of the Code of Ordinances, and part of that review will involve a reorganization. In the course of that reorganization, section numbering will change. Currently, our section numbering, as you can see on the screen and as you are well-familiar with, is, the section is denoted by the chapter, a dash, and then the section number. This unfortunately means that regardless of the article or the division, all section numbers are a continuous list from the start of the chapter until the end. This requires us to reserve sections, which results in sections that have decimal places after them, where, you know, a single ordinance requires multiple sections, but we do not have enough sections available. The future plan is to change to a multi-number system that indicates the chapter, article, division if necessary, followed by the section numbers, that all of these are separated out, and it's very, very clear when we're making citation to the law which one it is. Types of legislative action. As I said, a lot of this is review. There are a couple of things that I really want to highlight on this slide, but otherwise, I'm going to largely breeze through. First is homeroad petitions. Homeroad petitions are, of course, state law. They are not bound by this style guide. They should absolutely, while you are drafting them, still follow the good practices for legislative drafting, but the Massachusetts State Legislature, the federal legislature as well, for the record, though that's less relevant, have their own style guides. Specifically, the Massachusetts Legislature does not like the use of the Oxford comma. We're not allowed to do that with homeroad petitions. You might notice a theme here around my personal feelings about the Oxford comma. So, homeroad petitions are, as I said, state law. They are a request for a special act of the legislature on issues that are expressly reserved for the state legislature. There are six things in the state legislature, listed in the Constitution, actually, which I have here, or I had here, my apologies. I no longer have here. They are in a separate presentation, which is also attached to this. We will come back to that in a moment. But generally speaking, there are six subjects of law which municipal government cannot act on, and they are listed in the Constitution. There are also various things in the state legislature's Massachusetts General Laws, which is the body of statutes for the state of Massachusetts, which the legislature has acted on. We have all heard about preemption. Next are orders. Orders are a demand for information or a request for specific action from a municipal department. Resolutions are a non-binding request or a policy statement, and ordinances are the municipal law. It is the city or town equivalent of the general statutes, Massachusetts General Laws. Special rules. This is the part that I'm excited about. This is, as I said, the style portion of the drafting manual. This sets standards for grammar, formatting, punctuation, word choice, and they are here to promote reliability. Readability, predictability, these things are, as I said, very important. It's very important that when we are saying something, we are clear about it, and that the people who need to understand this can understand this. To that end, capitalization. I am going to run through these, I'm very sorry. Capitalization. Currently, there is no rhyme or reason in our Code of Ordinances as to which terms get capitalized. The general principle that we are going to work from here, from now on, is that proper names get capitalized. That means names of departments, places, street names, things like that. There are a few other things, like publications, citations to the Massachusetts General Law generally requires that those be capitalized, so there are some special rules within the special rules. I do recommend reading through these. Definitions. How definitions are structured does vary significantly throughout the Code of Ordinances. Now, I have created a template and a specific formatting process for definitions. We will get to some part of that in a moment when we talk about word choice. List structure. I do think that all of you know at this point that I love a good list. Unfortunately, this is the one thing that has really stood out to me as having absolutely no rhyme or reason within the Code of Ordinances. There is one ordinance in particular that I can think of that has no less than six different list formats within it. Makes it very difficult to follow what's going on. Numbers. There are as many rules about writing out numbers as there are numbers, it seems like. My rule is, I will admit, completely arbitrary, but it is because there is no other definite rule out there. All numbers should be written out as text, except for some very specific examples, such as dates, times, and monetary amounts in tables. Plurals. Unless it is absolutely necessary, we should avoid the use of plurals. What is applicable to one person is applicable to all of that same class of person. If I say "a business owner," it should be understood, and it is understood, that any business owner within the city of Somerville is bound by the ordinance. We do not need to say "business owners" in the city of Somerville. We also don't need to say "in the city of Somerville." That's not a special rule, but we only have jurisdiction over Somerville. Pronouns. Generally speaking, pronouns can cause confusion in an ordinance. When in doubt, it is always safest to repeat the noun in question. If you cannot, or if repeating the noun in question would cause further confusion, use the gender-neutral "they." There is no need to use "he" or "she," it is outdated, and also often causes substantial confusion. One thing that I would like to know at this point, since I have raised it organically, the overarching rule for all of these can be found in the general principles, and the idea is that if any of these rules, if adhering to them causes confusion, you should ignore them. However, use these as a starting point. Punctuation. I already said that I love the Oxford comma, but there are other things that I don't like, such as semicolons. Generally speaking, there's not really much need for a semicolon. There are other pieces of punctuation that are arguably much more appropriate. There are some uses for them in list format, but that is something else to discuss. Time periods. Jumping back to being direct, generally speaking, we should avoid things like "on or before then" and simply say "no later than," as few words as necessary to communicate that thing. We do not want any confusion, especially the use of "within X months" or something like that, can cause substantial confusion when reviewing an ordinance. And word choice. I am going to not bore you with a full rundown, and instead, we'll select some highlights from word choice. First, "and" versus "or." "And" means every single thing in that list. If I say that I want your email address, phone number, and home address, I need all three of those things. If I say "or," I need one of those things, or more. We do not need to use "and/or," we should not use "and/or." Avoid the use of "such" and "said." If we are talking about an applicant's application, we can say "the" application. We do not need to say "the" application, and then for every instance after, "said" or "such" application. Again, we can continue to repeat words. There's nothing wrong with repeating words, and using "the" just makes it simpler. People tend to gravitate towards things that look the same every time they look at them. A clear definition of "shall" and "may." This has been a point of some contention over the years, I am given to understand, and I am not the first to clearly define this in a drafting manual. Very simply, "shall" is a demand. If something is required of somebody, they shall do it. If you wish to grant somebody authority to do something, discretion to do something, "may." And if you wish to deprive them of that authority or discretion, they may not. "Shall not" is not used to say "no." And finally, "means" and "includes." If something means something, it means that thing. If a list is given that is preceded by "means," it is the things in that list that are important, and if you come up with a synonym for any of those things, that's not what I'm talking about. "Includes" is, the things that are on that list are included, but it is not itself a complete list. We do not need to say "includes" but "is not limited to," that is repetitive. This is also a great opportunity for me to highlight that part of the reason why I am here tonight is to read this into the record, because, as you should all know, the record is, as we discuss these things, part of the legislation itself. When we are discussing legislation, legislative intent is a thing that is considered when interpreting a law. By putting this out here, by putting this drafting manual out here, if somebody has a different interpretation of something, they can go to the manual and they can say, "Oh, well, it says here in this manual that 'shall' means this, 'means' means this, and 'and' means this." And that will make it much easier for people to interpret the law going forward. Also, by presenting to you tonight, we make it very clear that this is going forward. What is currently in the Code of Ordinances, unfortunately, does not adhere to this style manual. In the future, all future ordinances, and when it comes time to review the Code of Ordinances and refresh them, will be updated to match this style. Drafting standards and process. Again, this is a review for many of you, so I would like to speed through this very quickly. So, key components of quality legislation, necessity, effectiveness, practicality, my own little joke, equity. Come on, I had to throw one in there. And then, of course, process. All of you have now been through this with me at some point. Idea formulation, staff engagement, language production, committee discussion, and ordainment. So, I took more of your time than I intended to, but I am happy to take questions. I did also mention that there is a separate presentation attached to this item, where I go into those key components of legislation and those processes, the process in more detail. I am very happy to have this sent to committee, if it is the will of the President, and I'd be happy to make that presentation there as well, and discuss the contents of the drafting manual in detail.
I see some questions. We'll start with Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the President, firstly, thank you, Legislature Analyst Salisbury, which, you know, which we talk about titles, you can put that in the next drafting manual for titles. Thank you for putting this together. You know, I've had a history and tendency to try to, like, go at it on my own in some cases, to try to figure out how to draft something, and I don't think that that's always the best way to do it, but it is good to know that I could at least have, and future councilors could at least have, some kind of template and understanding of how to do that moving forward. My question was relevant to tonight. We have an agenda before us. It includes orders. Some of those orders start with "that the administration do X." Does your style guide say anything about orders that begin "that the administration"?
No, it does not.
Yes, it does.
Does it?
It does.
Oh, yes, it does. You're correct, Counselor. My apologies. Through the President, you are correct, it does. I do, this falls under the general principles of specificity, Counselor. It is important to direct orders to specific departments wherever possible. My apologies, you are correct.
Thank you for clarifying. That's my only question.
If I may, Madam President, I do want to clarify that certainly anything that begins with "the administration" is acceptable as a resolution, generally speaking. It is a broad statement, a policy statement, a broad request to a broad audience. An order should be specific. It is a specific demand to a specific department for information or a request to do a thing. So it should be very clear to the staff who have to handle that thing, who it is that it is directed to. Otherwise, it sits, it festers, and then in six months, members of this body will be back and saying, "Whatever happened to this? Well, we didn't know who to send it to."
Thank you. Counselor Shrezo. Counselor Strezow.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, to our Legislative Analyst—think it's your official title.
Madam President, through you, my official title is Legislative and Policy Analyst.
Yes, so I—
It is a mouthful.
That's very right. So, thank you for this. I appreciate your work getting it onto the record, and also, I totally disagree with you on your opinions on semicolons and Oxford commas. We won't get into that. However, I also—if this isn't to be presented every year at Counselors College, whenever we have Counselor College every two years for anyone—I ask that this be a presentation in addition to that, if it's not already planned as such. That's—if—I mean, Madam President, if our Legislative Policy Analyst wishes to respond to that, but if he had thoughts on that, but I think this should absolutely be included, not just on the record or thrown in the files.
Certainly, Madam President, through you, to the Counselor. There was a presentation actually made at the most recent Counselors College on drafting. The drafting manual had not been completed at that point, but the intent, I believe, is to incorporate elements of the drafting manual into that presentation going forward. Actually, the other presentation that is attached to this item is the presentation that was made at the most recent Counselors College.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Salisbury, for this. As folks know, I care deeply about words and clarity and precision, so this is right up my alley, and I appreciate all the time and effort you spent in putting into it. I would like to request that this go to committee, just so that if folks have any questions or follow-up or something, we have a forum for that. Not that I think—we wouldn't necessarily need to do that, but the good Policy Analyst noted the importance of legislative records, so we can have some of those conversations on the record in committee if necessary. I'll put a pin on that discussion about directing something at the administration, because I'd like to explore that, explore your thoughts on that a little bit further. But yeah, just thanks for this. Thank you for all the work. I hope that—I assume that the intent is that folks will use this as a starting point, but still work through you to put particularly more meaty items together, whether they be ordinances or resolutions and such. It's always—it's always good to have another set of eyes look at it, and we're very fortunate to have Mr. Salisbury here. I think that will ultimately—to the extent that folks do that, will save all of us time down the road. And I'll just end by saying Oxford comma until I die.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor McLaughlin.
I think you may use the Oxford comma, but I shelled.
Grammar, humor. So we'll place this on file with a copy sent to Legislative Matters. Thank you so much. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, next item. Yes.
That will return us to the regular order of business, and Item 4.1, an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Chief of Police, the Director of Parking, and the Director of Mobility discuss the consistent running of red lights during the weekday rush hour and repeated driver misuse of the Broadway bus lanes, including near the Temple Street and Broadway intersection.
Colleagues, we have a competition going. See how quickly we can get through our orders tonight. Counselor Strezow. I'm just kidding.
Madam—oh, Madam President, we do not have a competition running?
We can. We'll start the timer.
Okay. So, yes, I want to bring attention to this, because I see this every single day. I want to emphasize that this region of Broadway—we—this is not the first or even fourth time that the Ward Counselor has brought attention to the bus lanes, and I as well, and so I'm—but I am bringing this forward because I still see consistent speeding through the bus and bike lane on Broadway, and I see consistent cars, running lights on—from Temple onto Broadway. This is a direct path of where kids crossing to get to the high school, or trying to get to Winter Hill are traveling. They are crossing at this intersection every single day. There isn't a crossing guard, but also, there is a lot of just really dangerous situations happening. We need more emphasis on this. I'm asking this to be sent to committee. There just needs to be a conversation. I think this needs to be prioritized.
Counselor Wilson and Mbah would like to sign on. Counselor Kling.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I would like to sign on and thank the Counselor at Large for bringing this forward. As they say, you know, it takes the village, and you know, as many times I put things in about Broadway in general, in this particular area, you know, it's been slow-going to get some changes in safety measures in place, and so, you know, I just—any help I can get, I appreciate, and thank you for putting this in.
And Counselor Said would like to sign on. So let's send that to Traffic and Parking. Next item.
Item 4.2 is an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Chief of Police, the Director of Parking, and the Director of Mobility discuss the previous and ongoing strategy for implementation and public education of drivers violating the "no left turn" signage at the Somerville High School exit on Highland Ave and Vinaleve.
Counselor Strezow.
Thank you, Madam President. So, colleagues, this is another dangerous, dangerous situation that drives me bananas. Okay, so, the area where this order is describing is the exit driveway of the high school. And so, every day, drivers pull in to drop off students, pick them up. There are not one, but two no-turn-left signs posted at the exit. Not one, but two. And there's also a—so telling drivers not to turn left onto Highland Ave from the high school exit. The—every single driver pretty much consistently ignores this and takes a left. There is no traffic patrol. There is no repercussions. There are—there is—there's nothing. What is most dangerous about this turning point, where drivers are consistently ignoring the request not to turn left, is the fact that they're driving into a crosswalk where the kids from the high school are crossing the street, and might I add, they're teenagers, and teenagers walk typically where they want to walk, because they're teenagers. And they are crossing. Some are trying to get to the bus stop, and it's a perfect recipe for a fatality or an injury. And before that happens, I'm asking that the city take this seriously. I want this to go to committee. I have asked about this specific intersection several times, to no change, so let's all roll up our sleeves and sit down and talk about it for a bit. Thank you.
This item's sent to Traffic and Parking. Next item.
Item 4.3 is an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Director of Inspection Services and the Commissioner of Public Works discuss how uncleared and/or unsalted sidewalks and driveways are addressed and fined after it snows, including how much staff it takes to address community reports of uncleared private property.
Counselor Strezow.
Thank you. I do want this sent to committee as well, please. And this was brought forward by a constituent, and I think there's some really great points brought up. How are we taking care of this? How much effort and attention is being brought to uncleared sidewalks? And how much—how many—how many injuries are happening because of that not happening? Let's talk about it.
Okay. Let's send that to Public Utilities and Public Works.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item 4.4 is an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Director of Finance discuss the path for city councilors to receive administrative support staff to assist with city council work and communication with constituents.
Madam Clerk, can we read that next item?
And Item 4.5.
Item 4.5 is an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Director of Finance discuss the path for city councilors to receive administrative support staff in the form of paid internships to assist city councilors with city council work and communication with constituents.
Counselor Strezow.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'm thinking of you. I feel that we are blessed with constituents that are very information-driven. I'm grateful for that. We have highly engaged constituents, and that brings me so much joy. And as councilors, we are—we are on numerous platforms, numerous ways that we are connecting with our constituents. Social media, emails, phone calls, texts, et cetera. Some of you are doing that right now. And so, with that, I think that it's time that we modernize the support that—that many departments receive that we should also receive. I would like the Director of Finance to sit down with us and talk. I talked this over with Madam President. She'll send this to Finance, but I'm asking that the Chair of Finance, please bring me into the conversation when this comes forward. Thank you.
Great. Let's send these two items to Finance. Next item.
Item 4.6 is an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Director of Health and Human Services provide an update on the availability and accessibility of free menstrual products in all city-owned bathrooms, including realistic sizes.
Counselor Strezow.
Thank you. So this is an update of a similar item in Equity, where Health and Human Services discussed putting some menstrual products in—pilots in some bathrooms throughout the city. I would like them in all city-owned bathrooms, but I'd also like to talk further about the fact that some of the menstrual products in some of the school bathrooms and city-owned bathrooms are—from what some parents have told me—are the—are too large—the maxi pads are too large for some of these smaller bodies that are menstruating. And sorry to have to go here, but there aren't—just because menstrual products are being put into the bathrooms, it doesn't seem like there's actual intention behind the supplies that are being put into the buildings. So if—if—the average menstruator starts at age 10, and the only size of menstruation products, of maxi pads, being put into bathrooms are for an adult woman, there seems to be a discrepancy. And I'm happy to talk about this again and again and again and again, colleagues, everybody, until it's done properly, because we can't half-beep this. This is something that affects people's lives, and we have to take it seriously. It's about, you know, Equity. So can we please send this to the Equity Committee?
This will be sent to Equity. Next item.
Item 4.7 is an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Director of the Council on Aging discuss how the Council on Aging can help support seniors dealing with grocery store inflation, and how the city can help support their transportation to regional discount grocery stores.
Counselor Strezow.
Thank you. Can we send—I'm not going to talk too much about this. We can talk about it further in Equity. Thank you.
Okay, so that's Equity. Next item.
Item 4.8 is an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Veteran Services provide an estimated timeline as to when the removed veterans' memorial monuments on the City Hall concourse will be reinstalled.
Counselor Strezow.
Thank you. Can we please send this to Equity as well?
Counselor Kling and McLaughlin would like to sign on. Counselor Mbah.
Thank you, Madam President. To Counselor Strezow, thank you, you know, for submitting this. I think—I even spoke with one of the veterans today, and they really appreciated. I don't know if you know James Markey, so it's—you know, this is something that, you know, when we started this conversation last year, you never can tell, like, you know, it's always like, talk, 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 and I'm sure the good Counselor from Wadwon also appreciate you submitting this as well. So thank you all, I do correspond, so.
Great. So we'll send that item to Equity. Next item.
Item 4.9 is an order by Counselor Strezow, that the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Veteran Services install signage at the previous locations of veteran memorial landmarks, acknowledging the missing veterans' memorials, and conveying to the public a timeline or plan for their reinstallation.
Counselor Strezow.
Thank you, Madam President. This is similar. Just send it to Equity. This is the same thing I asked the administration last year, but now we're putting in an order. All I want is a sign conveying to the public to dispel the questions that, yes, and just validate the fact that, yes, the city is considering what to do. Yes, we have a plan, or we don't, or we're working on a plan now. Just a simple sign conveying that it matters to the city. That's all.
Counselor Mbah would like to sign on to that. We'll send that to Equity as well. Next item.
Item 4.10 is a resolution by Counselor Strezow, that the administration create a full-time staff position within the executive office, known as a senior liaison, who will work to prevent potential barriers within Somerville to growing older in place.
Counselor Strezow.
Retro. Back again. I am bringing this order and this request forward again, another year. Let's talk about it in Equity. Spoiler alert, I'm going to keep talking about it until hopefully this is a funded position. Let's go.
All right. Counselor Mbah would like to sign on. Okay. And we'll send that to Equity.
Madam President, waive the reading of 411 and send it to Traffic and Parking.
Okay. Thank you. Next item.
Item 4.12 is a resolution by Counselor Kling, that the administration discuss the decision to stop the annual employee holiday breakfast at the Department of Public Works building.
Sign me on to that, Madam Clerk. Counselor Kling.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. So, I don't know if many of you know, but there was an annual holiday breakfast that took place at the DPW building. It was for everybody, the engineering department, all of the guys, as they come on the way to their shift. It was sort of a rolling breakfast that, you know, they had pancakes and, you know, all the bacon and all that stuff. And they always looked forward to it, and it was just another way to show appreciation, and for some reason, inexplicably, it was terminated for this year. I don't know if that's going to be a year, you know, from here on out that it's gone, or if it was just this year. So I'd just like to have a public discussion regarding this issue, and I'm not sure what committee to send it to. Maybe—maybe Finance, just because it's a financial issue.
Yes.
I mean, just—in another thing I want to mention through you, Madam President, is, you know, it's also the—because the appreciation barbecue in the springtime for the DPW employees was also canceled, and I know that the DPW management staff threw down—put in the money to host a barbecue. This is the second event this has happened to in this past year, but this one really is something that, you know, everybody looked forward to, and something that, you know, truly showed some holiday spirit, especially when it's cold in the wintertime. So, I'm not sure if it's financial. I'm not sure what the reason is, but I think since it involves funds, I would like to go to Finance, if possible.
Counselors Davis, Wilson, and Strezow would like to sign on, and Counselor Said as well. Counselor Strezow, you want to speak on this?
Yep. Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counselor Kling for bringing this forward, because, yes, it's a simple morale booster. It's a simple—it's—it's something that's gone on for a long time, and I'm glad that you brought it forward as an order and a conversation now, because, yes, I just—the absence of it just seems a little disrespectful, and I don't agree with that. I'm glad that you did this. So, happy to sign on. Thank you.
Okay, we'll send that item to Finance. Next item.
Item 4.13 is a resolution by Counselors Kling and McLaughlin, that the administration return the Vietnam and Korean War memorials to a new public location as soon as possible, rather than waiting for a comprehensive plan for all veterans' memorials.
Counselor Kling.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. So, one of the things that we heard in the state of the city addressed from the mayor was that there is a—that this was mentioned in that address, that it sounds like there's going to be some progress, like, in the near future. At least, that's the way it was made to sound in the speech, which I was really happy to hear. I still wanted to keep this order in regardless. Like, I thought about maybe withdrawing it, but I think we need to keep the spotlight on this issue. I—you know, I appreciate the other orders that were put in, but this one specifically speaks to, you know, not waiting for a timeline that is extended based on a bunch of dominoes, such as the Winter Hill School, to the 1895, to the concourse. We're talking 10 years from now, these guys who want to go, you know, to the Vietnam wall or the Korean wall before they're able to go and, you know, reflect and spend that moment on those particular instances with their fallen brothers. And so, I think that, you know, whether it's Prospect Hill, if they can carve out a little space, or something, or whatever they come up with as a permanent home, that's up to them, but it needs to happen now, rather than later.
Counselor Scott would like to sign on. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I already spoke on this before, but I do want to just reiterate it, that, you know, I think if there's ever been an example of the perfect being the enemy of the good, it would be this, because the city does have grand plans for a overall veterans' memorial. I support it. We all have been on record supporting it. It looks great. It looks great. As Councilor Klingon said, there's a number of dominoes that need to fall into place. And in the meantime, I think particularly Vietnam veterans are stuck waiting for their memorial to come back. The average age of a Vietnam vet is 68 years old. Average age of a Korean War vet, if they're still alive, is 84 years old. And a few, and veterans also do not live as long as regular citizens. So this is, that's why it's such a pressing issue to so many people. And I think, you know, I think they would be satisfied with having the good instead of the perfect, and just find a place, a permanent location, temporary location, whatever it takes to acknowledge their sacrifice and save all the great things for later.
Counselors Mbah and Wilson and Strezzo would like to sign on. The whole council would like to sign on. Counselor Wilson, you want to speak on this as well?
Yeah, just really quickly, Counselor McLaughlin made a point similar to what I was going to say about the age of the, especially the Vietnam vets. The stat I would throw out there is that if it does take 10 years, that would mean the youngest Vietnam veteran would be 77 at that point. And given what we've just heard in terms of life expectancy, let's not wait 10 years, please.
Counselor, should we send this to Equity where the other items are?
Yeah, send it to, please, Madam President, to Equity for Counselor Strezzo with her other orders there.
Great. Let's send this to Equity. Next item.
Item 4.14 is in order by Councilors Wilson and Klingon that the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management update this council on the timeline for constructing a new school building.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I have a series of items. I'll try to be brief here. At the December meeting of the Construction Advisory Group, a timeline with projected dates all the way out was shared with the public through building the new school. The timeline had the new school opening in 2031. Given that that Winter Hill School building, 115 Sycamore, was closed in June 2023, and we were told we'd be pulling all the stops to get this new school building built as quickly as possible, it's tough for a lot of people to reconcile an eight-year timeline for this project, just given those assurances. So with all the discussion we've had in here in this body about timelines, MSBA, and overall, I just think it makes a lot of sense to have a full update on these estimated project dates and for the relevant staff to answer questions that we undoubtedly have here as a body. So I'd ask that this be sent to the School Building Facilities and Maintenance Committee. Thanks.
Great. Let's send this to School Buildings, Facilities and Maintenance Committee. And Counselor Said and Klingon would like to sign on to that. Next item.
Item 4.15 is in order by Councilors Wilson, Panetta, Neufeld, and Klingon that the Chief Fire Engineer and the Commissioner of Public Works discuss with this council how to ensure fire department facilities are well-maintained.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I know you and others saw a social media post this past weekend that highlighted some, we'll call them maintenance issues in our firehouses. Just in light of that post, I spoke with both our Chief Fire Engineer and our Commissioner of Public Works about what we could do to ensure there's a good system in place to report and then handle the maintenance issues in our fire stations. I'm honestly way less interested in pointing fingers here than I am about looking ahead at how we can ensure our firefighters are in a suitable environment in their homes away from home. So I'd suggest public health and public safety perhaps for this one.
Yes. Counselor Klingon, Counselor Davis first, and Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to check, I didn't catch, but did item 4.14 get sent to committee?
It did. The school buildings, facilities, and maintenance. Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to sign on to this one like I did the last one. That was so nice, I signed on twice. So on this one here, you know, I think the theme of dominoes and kind of things falling into place is sort of like one of the, I think, one of the issues that the city tends to, you know, get itself bound up in. My concern about these fire stations and buildings is that, you know, maybe there's some master plan to, you know, to completely refurbish, and then that goes on the capital investment plan, which then gets pushed down as something like the Winter Hill comes on. So I really think that we need to focus on just, you know, renovations or just making sure that everything works, including the toilets. You know, there was a post on social media regarding the different things that are wrong in the different fire stations, and I just want to make sure that the city is focused on making sure these guys have the facilities that are currently there in working condition and not waiting until, you know, we can do this grand plan to fix it all at once. So, yeah, I appreciate the counselor putting this in with me, and I know, send it to committee.
Counselor Mbah would like to sign on, and we'll send that to public health, public safety. Next item.
Item 4.16 is in order by Councilors Wilson and Scott that the Director of Parks and Recreation and the Commissioner of Public Works update this council on short and long-term plans for the Founder's Memorial Skating Rink.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, we'd heard in the fall that Founder's Rink, that's the newer, smaller ice rink next to Veterans Memorial Rink over by Conway Park, was due to potentially be used as a teen center. I know Parks and Recreation had used it for pickleball courts before the uninsulated structure got too cold to be used comfortably. But then rather than putting down ice in the winter, it's my understanding that Founder's Rink is just sitting there dark and empty for months and months here until the weather warms back up and it can be used again for pickleball. FMC Ice Sports, they're the operator for what used to be the two rinks that were operated in the city for years now. My understanding is, from looking at some finances, that the smaller rink, this Founder's Rink generates, in the past generated around $35,000 a year in revenue for the city from the operation of that from FMC Ice Sports. There obviously won't be any revenue from FMC, from Founder's this year due to there being no ice there. So we lose out on revenues, and some rural families lose out on local ice time. Instead, they have to drive far out in the suburbs and exurbs for hockey practices and games. And I'd surmise the reason for this is that we're still figuring out as a city what our medium and long-term plans are for the Founder's Rink. So it'd just be great to get some more information on this and learn why it is the way it is. Given the financial impact on the city, could I ask this be sent to Finance for discussion, please?
Yes. Let's send this item to Finance. Next item.
Item 4.17 is in order by Councilors Wilson and Mbah that the Director of Parks and Recreation update this council on the progress of conducting a representative multilingual survey of the community to determine recreational programming needs.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I'm back on my, we'll say, strong interest in seeing our Parks and Rec Department do a representative survey of the community to determine program interests. City staff are out there planning, offering programs that they're guessing suit the community's needs, but wouldn't it be great if they actually knew what the community really wanted programmatically from their Parks and Rec Department? We've been hearing for years the survey is going to happen. The best time for it to happen would have been years ago. The next best time is now. So I'd ask this be sent to Equity, please.
Send this to Equity, and I'd like to sign on to that one, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Item 4.18 is in order by Councilors Wilson and Burnley that the Director of the Office of Sustainability and Environment discuss with this council plans to connect more households with the new incentives in the 2025 to 2027 Mass Save Plan.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, Mass Save submitted their 2025 to 2027 plans to the Department of Public Utilities for approval. This plan contains a lot of new incentives, including ones targeting lower-income households and rental units. Given the, given the popularity of these programs and the housing stock of our city, I'd just love to know what we're doing as municipal government to make sure that folks in our city know about the program and are connected with it in a way that helps them access these incentives. And I guess perhaps could we send this to Open Space?
All right, let's send that to Open Space. Counselor Mbah would like to sign on to that one. Next item.
Item 4.19 is a resolution by Councilors Wilson and Said that the administration form a community center task force to coordinate community uses of multiple planned and potential community center spaces in the city to guard against duplicative and incomplete addressing of needs.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, last one. Just this week, the community learned more about the Somerville YMCA's plans for their new facility just across the street from here, with Boynton Yards US2, I believe obligated to build community center spaces, Rafi Properties included a community space as part of their Summer Nova proposal, and just frequent calls on this body for opening up our awesome, still-new-ish high school to community use outside of school hours. We just really need to make sure that we're capturing what the community uses that our community wants to see are, and then coordinating these planned and proposed new community spaces in a way that we're not duplicating efforts in different locations where it doesn't make sense, and then possibly failing to address entirely some really important needs just because they weren't included in any of these spaces by the people who are programming them separately. So ideally, this task force would be charged with producing a community center master plan to guide the creation and operation of these spaces as they come online. Thanks.
Counselor Ewan Kempin would like to sign on to that one. And Counselor Klingon. And would you like to go to committee?
Madam President, it's just a, I guess, just a resolution. I'm fine with just the agreement tonight.
Okay. That item's approved. Next item.
Item 4.20 is in order by Counselor Burnley that this council discuss proposed amendments to the tree preservation ordinance as outlined in item 24-0493.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the Chair, this council last year received a public comment from a resident of ours who may or may not be in the room, who is deeply engaged with our tree preservation ordinance and wants to see it be as robust as possible so that our community stops losing trees to oversell as developers to, I mean, we could talk about gas leaks, et cetera. But that puts the strongest legislative footing and hopefully enforcement in place so that we can actually have a growing and vibrant community. And I'll admit, based on how our public comments tend to come in, it was not something that I immediately caught and moved on. So I want to rectify that by bringing it forward and sending this to, hopefully Legislative Matters, which I'm not on, but I trust the committee, to go through the proposed changes and see if we are in a position to actually do more on this than when it was initially brought forward.
Counselor Scott would like to sign on. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the good counselor at large for bringing this. I, too, noted the initial submission last year and inquired with the administration, well, to the administration ultimately, through our Legislative Policy Analyst, and was told that the administration had the recommendations and was working through them in advance, with the intent of submitting something to the council. I circled back this week to get an update on that and was told that the public space at Urban Forestry is hoping to have a draft finalized by the end of the month on these. They've been working with law, engineering, ISD, and other departments to just, you know, ensure that the, that their proposal is done properly. I share the good counselor-at-large's desire to see this move forward, and so hopefully that work that we're told is happening will be, will be productive in having a submission soon so that we can take it up in the committee. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson.
Thanks, Madam President. Yeah, this is something Counselor Said and I had done some work with our Legislative Policy Analyst last year. Not all the things that were in this memo were things we talked about. Some of them are very similar. Neither of us are on Legislative Matters, but our good policy analyst over there does contribute with the committee, so I have full confidence in our policy analyst to help guide that discussion with some of the things we've learned with that work last year. Thanks.
We'll send that to Legislative Matters. Next item. Oh, and Counselor Said would like to sign on. Okay. Next item.
Item 4.21 is in order by Councilors Burnley and Ewan Kempin that the Director of Parks and Recreation restore or replace the nearly 30-year-old Nunziato Field plaque.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Through the President, I meant to attach a picture to this item just to highlight the sorry state of this particular plaque. I happened to be walking through the neighborhood one day and it caught my attention that this plaque, which was first put up in 1997 under Mayor Capuano, is very, very difficult to read. It looks, it looks ancient, and it looks almost dangerous in the way that it's upheld. I will note that this field does have other signage to kind of commemorate the history there, but frankly, I think we should either restore this plaque, replace it, or find a more appropriate place for it, perhaps in conversation with the Somerville Museum or another local body. But the current state of it, I think, is just, is not appropriate to, for the public's consumption. So I'd be interested to see a conversation about this take place. Where that happens, probably Open Space is probably the most appropriate place. So I'd like to see this go to Open Space.
Okay. We'll send that to Open Space. Great. Next item.
Item 4.23 is in order by Counselor Davis that the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Engineering report to this council on the failure of the boiler at the Brown School and the short and long-term plans to address heating for the building.
Please sign me on to that. Counselor Davis and Counselor Said as well.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is a good example of, when I submitted this item, I addressed it to the administration because I don't know who the right person is to speak to this, and I think it's incumbent upon the administration to decide who that is, not me. And so if that happens to be the Commissioner of Public Works or the Director of Engineering, then great. If that, if it should be somebody else, I'm looking over to our representative of IGA. Please don't let the wording of this item limit your, the scope of who you bring forward. I anticipate, I'm going to ask Madam President that this go to School Buildings, Facilities and Maintenance. I anticipate that, based on the other items I am planning to have in the agenda, that hopefully we'll have the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management there, so I imagine that Director Rash might be able to address this as well. To be clear, for anyone who hasn't noticed, there's a big red trailer outside the Brown School. If you're wondering what it looks like, just take a look right out here. Quite similar to our wonderful temporary boiler that we enjoy in this building here. It, so I have questions about the use of that, the intended, whether that's intended to be for as long as we have the building, or if that's just for the rest of this year, or what. I think, you know, there's many questions there. That boiler failed last week, this week?
This week. This week.
Time flies. Earlier this week, and the kids were sent home, thankfully, and thanks to whomever it was that got that back up and running quickly. My understanding is that it was, it was, heat was on again by the end of the day, and kids were able to go back. But so sort of a two-part item, just to be clear that I kind of want to discuss all of it, everything having to do with that, both in terms of the immediate plans and long-term. So if I could go to School Buildings, Facilities and Maintenance. Thank you.
Yes. Counselor Burnley would like to sign on to that, and we'll send it to School Buildings, Facilities and Maintenance. We need an acronym for that committee. S-P-F-M. Yeah. Okay. 32 minutes. Congratulations. I will keep track at our meetings coming up. Next item is Madam Clerk.
Item 6A is a report of the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters, meeting on January 8th, 2025.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met last night to take up a time-sensitive appointment for a new police officer, Ryan Westgate, so that he can attend the upcoming Police Academy. The committee was duly impressed by Mr. Westgate and the answers he gave to our questions, and unanimously recommended him for confirmation. This committee report is submitted.
Any questions? All right, that item's approved. Next item.
The next item is item 7.4.
Counselor Wilson.
Madam President, I'll move to waive the readings of items 7-4 to 7-10 and ask these be sent to Finance.
Those items will be sent to Finance. Next item.
Item 7.11 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the reappointment of Darcy Haynes as constable.
I move for approval.
One of our constable, oh, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Ewan Kempin moves to approve. Any objections? That item's approved. Next item.
Item 7.12 is a request of the mayor requesting that city councilors submit budget funding priorities by March 27th, 2025.
No questions? All right. That item is approved. Next item.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the city clerk requesting confirmation of the reappointment of Peter Force Lacy to the position of legislative clerk.
Hmm. Counselor Ewan Kempin.
I move for approval.
Any questions? That item's approved. Next item.
Item 8.2 is an officer's communication from the city clerk requesting confirmation of the reappointment of Madeline Letelier to the position of Legislative Services Manager.
I move for approval.
Questions? That item's approved. Next item.
Item 8.3 is an officer's communication from the Director of Economic Development and the Director of the Arts Council conveying an updated draft Armory Master Plan.
That item is placed on file unless anyone wants that in committee? Okay. Item's placed on file. Next item.
Item 8.5 is an officer's communication from the City Council Finance Analyst conveying fiscal year 2025 second quarter spending update. fiscal year 2025 second quarter spending update.
Council Scott. No.
Madam President, I just wanted to revisit an item that had been designated to go to committee if we could.
Sure, which item?
It's 7.9.
That item went to Finance.
Yes, ma'am. I asked to move for approval this evening.
Ah, got it.
This is generous donation, but Mr. Cahill is our electrical inspector here in the city of Somerville, long-serving, extremely well-respected in the community, and this was a lift chair that was purchased for his father, who recently passed before it was able to be installed. And rather than have it simply go to waste, he is generously donating it to the city and particularly the city's fire department. So I would move that we accept that tonight with our gratitude and thanks, not only for his long service, but our condolences for his loss. Thank you.
Gotcha. Do we need a roll call on that, Madam Clerk?
No, but item 8.5 is still on the table. Do we want to lay that on the table? Go back to 7.9?
Yes, let's lay that on the table and go back to 7.9.
Item 7.9 is a request of the Mayor requesting approval to accept a gift valued at $3,594 with no nuance required of an evacuation chair from the estate of Thomas F. Cahill to the fire department.
As stated, ma'am, move for approval with our gratitude. Thank you.
Any objections? That item is approved. Back to 8.5.
And item 8.5 is the Officer's Communication from the City Council Finance Analyst conveying fiscal year 2025 second quarter spending update.
We will place that on file and send a copy to Finance.
Item 9.1.
Council Burnley.
Thank you. Unless there's objection, I'd like to waive the readings of 9.1 through 9.4 as well as 10.16 and ask that they all be approved.
10.16, great. Okay, next item.
Item 9.5 is a public communication from Cole Rainey Slavic submitting comments regarding broker fees.
We'll place that item on file.
Item 9.6 is a public communication from three residents submitting comments regarding the draft Armory Master Plan.
We'll place that on file. Next item.
Item 9.7 is a public communication from Andrew Sessa submitting comments regarding the West Branch Library.
Place that on file. Next item.
Item 9.8 is a public communication from 1,186 individuals, including one resident, submitting comments regarding a ceasefire.
We'll place that item on file. Next item.
Item 10.1 is a communication by Councilor Pernanda Newfeld in her capacity as president conveying this council's updated standing and special committee assignments and commission appointments for 2025.
Colleagues, everything is different. I'm just kidding. The item attached to this item, the attachment now, is fully up-to-date, corrected. Thank you for those who pointed out a couple of errors earlier today. It is now there for your viewing pleasure and for your committee scheduling fun from here. So let me know if you have any questions, but that item is placed on file.
Item 10.2 is in order by Councilor Klingon that the Director of Human Resources provide this council with details of employee trainings provided and which are required.
Council Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. So, you know, many people, I work for the state in the daytime, and I know that, you know, the state has a sort of robust training process, yearly trainings and so on, and, you know, I would assume that the city of Somerville has something similar, but I really, I'd rather not assume. I'd rather understand fully, like what, you know, when someone gets on-boarded and then, you know, what trainings they go through, and then anything thereafter, and, you know, how, sort of, what the frequency of the trainings are. I just think it's important that we have this discussion pub-- this could come in the form of a document, but I would like also to go to committee where we could discuss these details, because again, I think the public wants to know how our employees are being trained and when, and how often, and what they're being trained regularly. I know the school side, which is, I think, subject to the state's TDC, they also get mandatory trainings in the same way that most state employees do, but the city, it's up to the city to handle their own training and what their requirements are on themselves. So I think it's important that we hear about those trainings. So I'd like this to go to Confirmation Personnel Matters.
Yes, Council Wilson.
Madam President, I had something right after this.
Okay. Yes, let's send this to Capem. Great, next item.
Madam President, could I request we take a look back at item 8.3? We'd place that on file. I was going to ask if we could have a copy of that sent to Finance, please. It's the update of the draft Armory Master Plan.
Okay, got that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. We'll send 8.3 to Finance.
The next item then is item 10.3 in order by Council Klingon that the Director of Human Resources appear before the Committee on Confirmation of Appointments and Personnel Matters to discuss the city's protocols for returning to work when an employee has been disciplined for an offense deemed sexual in nature.
Council Klingon.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Similar to the last order, it's just kind of what the protocols are. If, you know, if somebody is disciplined for something that is deemed sexually inappropriate type of behavior, are they counseled before they come back? Do they go through an update, you know, another training before they're back on the job? These are things that I think, you know, I'd like to know, and I'm sure colleagues do and the public as well, how these matters are handled in these sensitive type situations like this, especially where the other party may still be at the same location and so on. So I'd like to, you know, have that discussion in, also in Appointments and Confirmation Personnel Matters.
Great, let's send that to Capem. Next item.
Item 10.4 is in order by Councilor Said that the Commissioner of Public Works make a change to the calendar by extending the yard waste collection by at least one week.
Council Said.
I would like this to be sent to committee, but I'm not sure what committee is appropriate for this, but a constituent reached out to me. I think we've all seen that the leaf situation with climate change is, it was early December, there were some trees with leaves, so this is in order asking if the change can be made to the calendar to extend the yard waste one more week at least. Yeah, so.
Think Public Utilities, Public Works?
Yeah.
Great, Councilor Davis on this.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes. I'm not sure, so don't quote me on this, but I think that it got moved to the first week of December because I submitted a similar order years ago after having all my buckets and bags filled at the end of November and then, you know, having leaves still on the trees. But as the good counselor from Ward 5 noted, our ecosystem keeps changing, and it's become an annual tradition of filling up all the buckets and realizing you can't get rid of the bags anymore, and then shoving them under the porch or somewhere where they're not going to turn into a giant pile of whatever. So, yeah, I agree with this. I think, I might suggest if the good counselor wants to take this up, we both sit on Open Space, Environment, and Energy, but certainly that committee or Public Works, Public Utilities, just if you wanted to, if the good counselor from Ward 5 wanted to be part of the discussion, that's the first committee that occurred to me, but up to the President.
Yeah, through you, Madam President. Yeah, I think we can discuss it in open space. It is climate change-related, but I want action, so whatever that, the best committee, I can do it, so.
Council Mbah is Chair of Open Space. Are you open to this being in your committee? More the mayor? Okay, so let's--
Through you, Madam Chair, thank you.
Send this to Open Space.
Thank you.
Okay, next item.
Item 10.5 is in order by Councilors Said and Pernanda Newfeld that the Director of Mobility, the Director of Engineering, and the Director of Parking appear before this council to present on the citywide parking and curb use study.
Council Said.
Through you, Madam President. So just to tell colleagues, in the last Traffic and Parking meeting back in December, there was a very brief, I wouldn't say presentation, more of like a discussion about the study, but we, there was no, there were no slides, there's no data, so we made the request as a committee that this department do a presentation and work together and tell us what they, what are the recommendations from this study. So we hope to have that presentation soon.
Council Wilson and Burnley would like to sign on, and Council Mbah. And I'll just highlight, we're hoping that the presentation's in front of the full council, not just in committee, since it was such a major report of the city that we never got an update on. Okay, so that item is approved. Next item.
Item 10.6 is in order by Council McLaughlin that the Director of Planning, Preservation, and Zoning draft an amendment to the zoning ordinances for transit-oriented height and density bonuses for additional affordable housing and other enumerated community benefits.
Councilors Davis and Wilson would like to sign on. Council McLaughlin and Council Klingon as well.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an old order that I'm just putting back into the rotation. Worth noting, however, is the city council now has their own land use analysts, so I'm very excited about this item in particular, and hopefully we can get something done this year. So I'd like to refer this to land use.
That item's referred to land use. Next item.
Item 10.7 is in order by Council McLaughlin that the Director of Mobility update the Ward 1 city councilor on the status of the Kensington Connector.
Council McLaughlin.
Yes, Madam President. Able Clerk asked us recently to go through all of our old items and put ones in to update them. I was happy to see so many of those orders were addressed, but this is one that I think I've put in every year for perhaps the last 10 years, which is the Kensington Connector, which is the underpass between the Stop and Shop and Assembly, and someone has died there. That's the most important thing, and we have had good safety measures implemented there, but it's also just an unsightly area. It's, you know, collects trash all the time, it's poorly lit, and we had all these grand plans for murals and lighting and pedestrian accessibility. And every year I hear it's going to happen, and then it's just not happening. So I'm just putting this again because I really want to see it get done. It really feels like an easy win that just somehow gets lost in the mix. I think it could go to any number of committees, but I am the Chair of Public Health and Safety. If that's a committee that you see fit, I'd love to take it up there.
Okay, Council Scherzo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm glad through you to award one counsel. I'm glad that you brought this forward because I often walk my dog or run past this area. Update for you, it's still smelly under there, and somebody has slashed and ripped open the decorative banners that were put up several years ago of East Somerville contributors to the community, which is a major bummer. So it definitely needs a lot of upkeep and attention, and I really hope that it gets it. So thanks for bringing this forward. Sign me on, please.
Okay, Council Scherzo would like to sign on. We'll send this to Public Health, Public Safety. Next item.
President, if I can, I'd like to waive the readings of our items, number 10.9 to 10.12, as well as 10.15, and refer them all to Public Utilities and Public Works. And after it's waived, I'd like to say a few words on it.
Okay, we're on 10.8.
Oops, sorry. 10.8, I'd like to refer to Public Health and Safety.
Okay, that item's referred to Public Health and Safety.
I'll read that one first, though, if we're not waiving it. Item 10.8 is in order by Council McLaughlin that the Director of Health and Human Services, the Director of Housing, and the Director of Housing Stability update this council regularly on progress towards addressing homelessness.
We'll send that to Public Health, Public Safety. And so Councilor McLaughlin, you'd like to speak on those five items.
Just 10.9 to 10.12 and 10.15.
Got it.
These are all in reference to 165 Broadway, which is a city-owned building. On the first floor, they have a food kitchen, and then on the second floor is the Center for Teen Empowerment. It's been there for many years. We discussed this at the height of the library issue, that this is an area that teens already know about. They congregate there, they have programming, they have staff, they don't have an elevator, so it's not ADA accessible, and therefore they're not allowed to have certain programs there. I went to a Christmas event this year that had about 30, 40 kids there just hanging out, getting food, being safe, enjoying each other's company. Does not count towards Teen Empowerment's grant, so they have to justify more events in order to meet this grant because it's not an ADA-accessible building. So that's one thing I really want to make sure that this building is ADA-accessible so that it can be a thriving place for teens to go. There's also a number of maintenance issues, just, you know, missing ceiling tiles, the heat's out every now and then, just issues like this that I'd like to get addressed. And the top one, since we have the IGA's office here, just I want to be clear about one item in particular, is like, there's a number of just city materials, mostly files put in an office, they've been there for years, nobody uses them, and it's taking up an entire office that could be used for teen empowerment. And the new director there has to have conversations with staff or private conversations off-site because the walls are so thin that she can't have private conversations with people there. And that just seems like the easiest lift, is just get these files out, perhaps we can put them with the memorials that are locked away. Easy win there. Some of them are other maintenance issues that have a longer issue, but I'd like to send these all to Public Utilities, Public Works, and make sure that the teens have a good place to thrive in the city.
Those items will be sent to Public Utilities and Public Works. Next item.
Item 10.13 is in order by Council McLaughlin that the Commissioner of Public Works update this council on the use of beet juice to address ice and snow during winter storms.
Council McLaughlin.
So during the President, the Mayor's midterm address, she talked about many great things, and the one that piqued my interest the most was beet juice to address ice and snow, the pro being that it's environmentally safe. The question I have is, do rats like beet juice? I'm just curious about it. So I'm very interested in learning more. It felt like something worth highlighting and talking about and getting more information about. I could see it going to rodents, I could see it going to Public Utilities, maybe Public Utilities makes the most sense.
Yes, let's do that. Council Burnley first.
Through the President, to Council McLaughlin, have you ever thought the plan is to get the rats out into the streets where we can get them, and then we just, we take them from there?
I would say they're everywhere at all times. So when I went to get my bike out the backyard today, I had to fight some rats already. So they're not hiding anymore. They're in plain sight.
Asking the tough questions tonight. So we'll send that to Public Utilities and Public Works. Next item.
Item 10.14 is in order by Council McLaughlin that the Director of Parking allow public use of school parking lots during snowstorms.
Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an issue, like I've talked directly with people about this and have just never gotten a good answer about it. This predates the current superintendent of schools, and it's one of those areas where it's a school building issue, but the superintendent makes the decisions, I believe, and it's a very gray area, and I've never really gotten a good answer as to why the public cannot use parking lots for a school if there's a snow emergency and teachers are not coming to the school. So it seems like, I've never heard a very good answer. There might very well be a good answer for it, but I know in my neighborhood where we have several public schools with parking lots where people used to park their cars there during a snow emergency, they're not allowed to do this anymore, and since I've never gotten a straight answer on it, I figured I'd put the order in.
Council Davis.
I'll give you a straight answer. This was a direct result of orders and discussions that I put in because back when it used to snow around here, and we parked cars during snow emergencies in the school parking lots, there were, there was more than one occasion when schools remained closed for additional days because we couldn't get the cars out of the parking lots, where we otherwise could have opened the schools. And after a lot of sort of hammering and shouting, and not actual shouting, but pushing, basically finally got, finally got someone to admit that, yes, it's because the cars are there, that's why we had, otherwise we could have opened the schools. And so I fought to have that policy changed, which I'm glad we did because I think kids should go to school when they can, but it never hurts to revisit something, so if it's worth having another conversation again, you know, certainly can look at where we are now and what makes sense. But that's the, that's my understanding and what I was told from the administration, past administration, that that was a direct result of the sort of annoying pushing that I was doing on it. Sorry.
Council Klingon.
Yeah, this is, Madam President, through you. I think also, similar to that, and I also have a school in my, a couple of schools in my ward where people are asking the same question, and I think it's also some of those instances where we call a snow emergency, see the blue lights on, and then we never, we get like an inch of snow, and so they, even though there was a snow emergency the night before, they still call school for the next day, and then they can't come in. So now the kids aren't coming to school, and there's zero snow on, there's very little snow on the ground. That was also what I was told, but I'd like to hear, you know, straight from the horse's mouth, updated if I agree. So, thank you.
Should we, Council McLaughlin, would you like to send that to Traffic and Parking?
I think would Public Utilities make more sense, or even the School Buildings Committee, since the school committee might want to be interested in it?
Yeah, that's a good idea. School Buildings, Facilities and Maintenance, SPM. SPM. SPAM. Next item.
Item 10.17 is a public communication from Chris Dwan submitting comments regarding Urban Forestry Committee recommendations.
We're going to need to roll call this one. We'll place this on file, Madam Clerk. Yes, we'll send this to Legislative Matters. Madam Clerk--
And that brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening, Madam President.
Are there any late items?
There are no further items before this council.
All right, with that, Council Wilson moves to adjourn. We adjourned. Good night.